An all call to order the City County Council meeting for Monday, September the 9th, 2019. And we'll begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Simpson.
Good evening, everyone. I bring before you my pastor, Pastor Kevin Rogers of Capital City Seventh-day Adventist Church to give the prayer.
Amen. Would you bow your heads with me? Father in heaven, we just want to thank you and praise you for the gift of life today. We thank you, dear God, that you have seen fit, Lord, not only for us to be alive but to live in this city of Indianapolis. And we're praying today for our mayor and all of our councilors, dear God, that you would give them wisdom and the courage, Lord, to discern what's best for our city and to make decisions and to be united. We pray for the healing of our city. We pray for the peace of our city. We're praying for the families and the young people in this city, dear God, that you would bless and help us, Lord, to grow and to be stronger in you. And we thank you again for your promise to hear and answer our prayers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, our own.
Counselors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. There are 25 members of the council present this evening. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor McCullin.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're delighted tonight to have a group of young people with us representing high schools all over Marion County, all over Indianapolis. Tonight, we have the 2019 to 20 council members of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. If you would all please stand and be recognized. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. With us today, we have many members of our community here to urge our city leaders to support the long overdue need for a new animal care center. And if they could all stand up and be recognized today.
Thank you, Mr. President. They didn't know that I was going to do this, but I would like to introduce the two most important people in my life, the two that have taught me integrity, to think independently, and to always treat others the way that I would want to be treated. So I would like to introduce my parents, Charles and Melinda Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge and welcome our IFD chief, Ernest Malone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome fellow Southsider, lifelong Perry Township resident, Mike Dilke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce a good friend of mine, a constituent of mine, a local businessman and northeast side resident, Adam Cox.
Thank you for the second recognition, Mr. President. I would like to introduce a friend of mine, a friend of many in the chamber, and a great guy and community involved folk here in Indianapolis, Mr. Doug Brown, the managing principal of Bose Public Affairs. Thank you for being here.
Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge tonight our IFD leadership, Scott Williams and Hank Harris, if you stand up, and also our first responders. If you could take a stand today, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce a great community advocate, James Wilson. If he could rise and let us salute you.
The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, September 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business, excuse me, that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Vop Osili, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, our calls to be published in the court and commercial record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, August 16th, 2019, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 275, 2019, said hearing to be held on Monday, August 26th, 2019 at 5:30 PM in room 260 of the City County Building, and a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 314 and 315, 2019, said hearing to be held on Monday, September 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the public assembly room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number 16, general ordinance numbers 49 and 50, special resolution numbers 28 through 30. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for August 12th, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. I will say that generally by tradition, we don't hear these during our time of our budget, but I was notified that we had two or three of these that were very time sensitive, so we've allowed them for this hearing today. First is proposal number 348, which recognizes Indianapolis as an international city of peace.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my first special resolution, and it really means a lot to me. This is City County Council Special Resolution 31, 2019, a special resolution recognizing Indianapolis as an international city of peace, whereas the city of Indianapolis supports providing a safe and nurturing environment and embraces diversity and fosters peace by encouraging and inspiring understanding, goodwill, and compassionate actions, and whereas the city of Indianapolis is an international city, globally recognized, inclusive city with seven global sister cities that is striving to create a balance of prosperity, justice, and hope that nurtures peace within the entire community through the dialogue and cooperation, and...
Whereas Indianapolis citizens have helped create and are helping to develop Indianapolis as an international city of peace as part of a global social movement through the development of peace initiatives that support a culture of peace, and whereas the United Nations has designated September 21st of each year to be the International Day of Peace, devoted to commemorating and sowing and nurturing the seeds of peace and inspiring citizens to commit to practice peaceful, compassionate behavior for the rest of the year and thus living in ideals of peace now. Therefore, be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana.
Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council and the mayor proclaim the city of Indianapolis, Indiana, to be a city of peace and prosperity. Section 2, the council and the mayor designate September 21st of each year to be the Indianapolis Day of Peace. So move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Mr. Scott Brewer come up and speak a little bit about this and how this came about, sir.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. I want to thank all of the Assembly today for your vote. I'd like to thank Andy Harris for championing this resolution and for Vop Osili. Thank you for supporting this, and Zach Adamson as well, and you gentlemen. I also want to recognize James Wilson with Circle Up Indy, who is one of the sponsors of this resolution, as well as Pace Kelly Mint, Reverend Ben Wakefield of Lynnhurst Baptist Church, Kevin McKinney at Nuvo, Aaron Polly at American Friends, the Quakers, and Jeanette Haran, which is the Peace Learning Center. And if I may have just a minute, supporting this resolution, these members came up with a vision, which is citizens of Indianapolis envision a community where joy, harmony, truth, freedom, prosperity, and peace become our global identity. Our mission is that Indianapolis community will work to create peace through participatory peaceful initiatives. We will joyfully celebrate 21 of September, the International Day of Peace, as an inspirational day offered as a gift to ourselves and our world family, with the purpose of inspiring us to live and practice peaceful, compassionate behavior throughout the year. One moment longer, our goals are to enact the global resolution for the establishment of infrastructures of peace to support the culture of peace, to encourage other international cities to become cities of peace by being an example of how to build peace globally by acting locally, to co-create peace by empowering our citizens to offer solutions, ideas, and initiatives that support peaceful, sustainable economic and social development, respect for human rights, including the right to peace, advance understanding and tolerance through participatory communications, and to establish peace education as a regular part of the curriculum of our youth and our community. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it, and God bless you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 365, which honors James L. Greason on his retirement as Indiana State Fire Marshal.
If you're here for this, will you please come down to the podium, please? Right here with me. All right, I think we're ready. City County Special Resolution Number 32, 2019, a special resolution honoring James L. Greason on his retirement as Indiana State Fire Marshal. Whereas James L. Greason was born on September 26th, 1948, and is a lifetime resident of Indianapolis. James L. Greason is also a veteran of the United States Army, and...
And whereas James L. Greason graduated from Thomas Carr Howe High School, received a degree from Indiana Vocational Technical College, and attended Indiana University, Purdue University. James L. Greason also attended the National Fire Academy, completing several courses in command and control of major incidents, and whereas... And whereas James L. Greason joined Indianapolis Fire Department, or IFD, in January of 1970, Mr. Greason served 26 years in the suppression division with his last assignment as shift commander. In addition to fire suppression, he also served as deputy chief of administration and deputy chief of operations. He has earned the respect of all who worked with him. And... And whereas James L. Greason was appointed chief of IFD in June of 2004 and held that position until his retirement in 2008, completing 38 years of service to the citizens of Indianapolis. Chief Greason was appointed Indiana State Fire Marshal by Governor Mitch Daniels on May 12th, 2008. Now therefore...
Be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City County Council recognizes James L. Greason as he retires from the Indiana State Fire Marshal position. Section 2, the City County Council recognizes the hard work, dedication, and achievements of James L. Greason. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join his, in this resolution, by affixing his signature heretofore, and so be, and so move.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, I'd like to say, this one's been a special one to me. Jim was a great friend of my late uncle, the previous fire chief, Keith Smith. So this is something I'm really happy and honored to be able to do for you, and I'm really happy we were able to get such a great turnout here with all the IFD support here. And I'd like to thank Rita Reeth as well. She helped out a ton with this. And with your permission, Mr. President, I'd like to ask James to come up and say a few words.
Please proceed.
Well, thank you, Counsel Maury, and everyone, all the other councilmen who signed their names to this and sponsored it. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I also appreciate the men and women in the Indianapolis Fire Department showing up to support me, and I think they're really here to make sure I retire. But I tell you, this is my wife Judy, by the way. I'm sorry, I need to introduce her. And this year is a lot of 50s in this year. It's my 50th year in the fire service. Our 50th wedding anniversary was just earlier, last month. And her 50th high school reunion is this weekend, or next weekend. But I want to tell you, for a kid that grew up on the near east side of Indianapolis, and I always comment, say, I grew up in the shadows of the gas plant there on Sherman Drive. Fire Station 12 and Fire Station 15. 12 was on Sherman Drive, 15 was on English. I lived right off the corner, and every time they had runs, I was a kid growing up, it seemed like they would almost hit each other at that corner, and I got to see them a lot. So I really fell in love with the fire service. And from a little bitty person, guy, and I'm still not quite that big, but anyway, I always wanted to be a firefighter. And I was so fortunate to be able to become a member of the Indianapolis Fire Department, which I will tell you is by far one of the leading fire departments in this country. And the support this council has given this fire department over the years, I appreciate that. I started coming to council meetings back in around 1973. So some of the faces here, I've seen around for a while, but there's some new folks I haven't been to council meetings lately. But over the years, I've attended many council meetings, whether as a private on the fire department or in a leadership position of IFD, presenting budgets and having conversations with councilmen, so I appreciate your support. I do want to take a minute to mention Chief Smith, who was the fire chief in Indianapolis from 1992 to 2000. Smitty and I worked very close together, and he was the chief, and I was either admin, deputy, or assistant chief under him. We worked every day together, and he was such a wonderful leader. And he took our fire department in those eight years as he was fire chief from, to leadership position across the country and the world with the 10 Cities Fitness Wellness Initiative, and there are labor management models that he set in this city and this country. So I want to, again, thank all of you. I love this city. I've been here, like I say, all my life. I've watched Indianapolis, I've worked downtown in Indianapolis since 1966 in some way or another, the fire service, or part 9 job, or whatever. And to see this city evolve to what it is today is quite phenomenal. And I want to thank Chief Malone for being here. Some of these folks were pretty young firefighters when I was on the job, and it's great to see them rise to leadership positions, because that's what you want. I want them to replace me and do well. So thank you so much for your time, and God bless all of you. Thank you.
I believe Counsel Gray wanted to say a couple of words. Oh, and Scott wanted me to mention as well earlier, I believe he thinks Judy's the one that deserves the award. Something about that.
My reward is to get to come home now.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Chief Greason. He and I came up through the ranks together on the fire department, and I've served as a deputy chief under Chief Greason, and I think that we did a great job. One thing I have to tell you about Chief Greason is that throughout the years, regardless of what we did, how dirty the fire was, how hot and sweaty we got, when we came back to the fire station, Chief Greason's hair was always in place. And I can see he's keeping that up today. His hair is still in place. Thanks, Chief.
I don't know what I can get to my sleeve with here.
You can put it in here. I've got about five copies, so you can distribute how you want.
Andy, thank you so much. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 366, which recognizes the weeks of September 15th and 22nd, 2019, as country music weeks in Indianapolis.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a special resolution recognizing the weeks of September 15th and the 22nd, 2019, as country music weeks in Indianapolis. Whereas the Southeast Working Class Task Force joined the Southeast Quality of Life Plan in 2015 with the intent of preserving the history and culture of the city's working people. And whereas America's country music reaches across cultures, social economic status, and global geography. And whereas country music songs and its people preserve the traditional values, tell stories about the lives of regular people, and in some instances, address social and cultural issues. And whereas long before the days when the father of country music, Mr. Jimmy Rogers, the yodeling breakman, and A.P. Carter and the Carter family were performing, I actually went to their original store in Tennessee, Indianapolis working people and other rural Housers were enjoying the folks and hillbilly music. And whereas throughout the 1940s to the 1990s, Indianapolis sprouted a large variety of honky-tonks, playing hillbilly, bluegrass, rockabilly, country, and country western music, providing relaxation, conversation, fun, friendship, and a place to listen to dance and live music. And whereas Bill Monroe decided to hold his nationally famous Bluegrass Festival in nowhere else but right here in Bean Blossom in Brown County, Indiana. And whereas country music went on radio in 1925 with the Grand Ole Opry's National Barn Dance on station WSM Nashville, Tennessee. Today, 37% of all American radio stations play country music. And whereas...
Whereas local and public television station WFY, Channel 20, will broadcast an eight-day, 16-hour Ken Burns documentary, country music, September 15th, 18th, and 22nd, recognizing the fidelity of the original contributors of country musics in our American society. Be it resolved that by the Indianapolis City Council of Marion County, the city council recognizes in the weeks of September 15th and 22nd, country music weeks in Indianapolis and encourages citizens to preserve the history and the culture of the working people. The mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. This resolution shall be in full force, effective adoption, and compliance of IC 36-3-4-14. I hear the same. I move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
We have here John Lofton from, they would like to say a few words.
Thanks, Frank. Yes, the Southeast Working Class Task Force, we're part of the Quality of Life Plan in the Fountain Square area. We'd like to thank the council, Mr. Osili, Counsel Evans and Masqueri, and the mayor for helping us with this decree. Remember, this is next Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and then the week after that, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, eight nights, 16 hours on the history of country music. And really, what this does is help us understand that country music is just not a narrow genre of music. And in fact, what makes country music uniquely American is the fact that it merges, now think about that, it merges the European violin with the African banjo. That's what makes country music such an outstanding... But I'd like to give a version of... I was born and raised in West Virginia, North Carolina I did go. There I met the prettiest maiden. Her name and age I did not know. Her hair it was of a light brown color, and her cheeks were rosy red. On her lips she wore, on her breasts she wore a lily, where I longed to lay my head. I'd rather be in some dark holler, where the sun refused to shine, than to see her with another, and to know she'd never be mine. I was born and raised in West Virginia, North Carolina I did go. There I met the prettiest maiden. Her name and age I did not know.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 310, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 310, 2019, appoints Kevin Riley to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Mr. Riley stated that he has been a probation officer for the last 25 years. As far as 12 years, he serves as an adult side. The last 13 years, he worked as a juvenile side of probation. Mr. Riley also said he oversees the Marion County Community Corrections, Department of Corrections grant funding. Counselor Simpson moves, seconded by Counsel Oliver. Send proposal 310 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries, 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers 333 through 337 refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee and were introduced by Counselor Gray. Proposal number 333 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Airport Authority and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2020. Proposal number 334 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and taxes, tax levies of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2020. Proposal number 335 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Health and Hospital Corporation and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2020. Proposal number 336 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, Indigo, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2020. Proposal number 337 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2020. Proposal number 338 and 339 refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal number 330... Proposal number 338, introduced by Councilors Robinson and Gray, authorizes the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million to procure funds for the acquisition, construction, installation, equipping, and/or financing of a fire training facility, together with expenses in connection with the issuance of the bonds and other related matters. Proposal number 339, introduced by Counselor Robinson, approves and adopts revisions to the Marion County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan as required by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Proposal numbers 340 through 347 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 340, introduced by Counselor Fanning, authorizes intersection controls at White River Drive and 79th Street in District 2. Proposal number 341, introduced by Counselor Graves, authorizes intersection controls at Aspen Way and Meadowlark Drive in District 13. Proposal number 342, introduced by Counselors Shreve and Westler, authorizes intersection controls at Camden Street and Markwood Avenue in District 16 and 24. Proposal number 343, introduced by Counselor Coulter, authorizes intersection controls at Maltree Drive and Wakulla Court in District 23. Proposal number 344, introduced by Counselor Evans, authorizes intersection controls at Waldemar Avenue and Ray Street in District 22. Proposal number 345, introduced by Counselor Coulter, authorizes intersection controls at Griffin Road, Surrey Drive, and Surrey Court in District 23. Proposal number 346, introduced by Counselor Shreve, authorizes parking restrictions on Lord Street from College Avenue to 50 feet east of Concordia Street in District 16. Proposal number 347, introduced by Counselor Cordy, authorizes intersection controls at Terrace Avenue and Ritter Avenue in District 18. Proposal number 364, introduced by Counselor Scales, refer to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, amends the code regarding functions and procedures of standing committees. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposal numbers 349 through 354 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August 20th and August 28th, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal number 363 is a rezoning ordinance certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August 15th, 2019. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will stand as denied. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposal will stand as denied. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. Proposal number 314, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Proposal 314, 2019, approving business appropriations, $50,000, letting budget of self-protection, due to contract architecture design and engineering, moving to the Justice Center, moving to Justice Center. We call back to work on self-protection, we're going to do now some of the system, not including the first stage, the justice of the campus. Dr. I said in March 2019, I'm making issue of our key, and we see several responses that they select. Elevators, architects, designers, and not so many, the managing of the office. Counselor Simpson moves, several obstacles, since the council passed the recommendation, most careful, tend to be room to president.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Proposal 314?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. It's Larry Vaughn. You know, I'm glad to see the Justice Center moving ahead now at the pace it's going, and I'm glad to see the diversity that's on the actual job site. I know I drive by there every day because it's in my community, and I just want to thank Andrew Mellon for his part in including every person that he possibly can in the construction of this facility. The only thing I hope is that when it's completed, the state of Indiana doesn't do another 10-06 on us and say that we have to house all the prisoners if they have a minimum of a 10-year sentence. So that might be one of the things that's going to happen when it's completed. I hope it doesn't happen, but as I say this again, that I'm just happy to see that the city of Indianapolis is moving ahead, doing a top-notch job, and also being inclusive on the situation. Thanks, Joe Hogshead. You're a real good mayor.
All right, are there any additional comments from anyone in the audience on Proposal Number 314? Seeing none, additional comments from councilors? Very good. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 315, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 315, 2019, appropriates the proceeds of Indy Road Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $40 million to fund the cost of certain street, road, bridge, traffic signal curb, and sidewalk projects, and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the issuance of the bonds, and the proceeds of, and the city Indy Road interim financing notes to fund the foregoing on an interim basis if such issuance is determined to be necessary. Counselor Gray moves, seconded by Counselor Osley, to send Proposal 315 to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of 10 to zero, and I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Ms. Carey.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Dan Parker a question.
Please. Director Parker, would you come forward?
Director Parker, three weeks ago, they ground down a street in Garfield. It hasn't been repaved. When it's going to happen? When is it going to happen?
Could you repeat yourself? I didn't hear.
They ground down the street three weeks ago. They haven't repaved it. When's it going to happen?
I'll have to get back to you on that one. I don't have the specific date.
That's the answer I always get.
Are there additional questions from members of the council? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Proposal Number 315?
Again, Larry Vaughn, please. You know, I'm so happy to congratulate our mayor once again. Because why? Because I was out on Capitol the other day, and I seen a crew from the city. They had a resurfacing project going on. They were running the whole project. They also had a new machine out there that the city can afford to buy and afford to employ men to do this work and miss out on the markup on the material and the labor, and I think we should be more invested in that, training a team of workmen that are especially trained to do our infrastructure work so that we can do it at cost and not rely on some contractors that can be deceitful at a time. But we need to have more of this training going on within DPW and buy more equipment because the private contractors cannot compete against this city. If we get our act together and move on towards having a crew that's developed to do our infrastructure, we save the money, we save that markup, and the city's going to do a lot better. Plus, the people I seen out on the job were my complexion. That's a good thing because they were employing people at a decent wage. So I'd just like to again say that I do compliment Joe Hogshead, our mayor, on the work that he's doing to diversify our city and also to get more done in-house, which is really going to save us money. So I'm just thankful for that, and anybody that's not thankful, I don't know what the hell.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to Proposal 315? All right, seeing none. Any additional comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. There is no business under Special Orders, unfinished business, so we'll now proceed to Special Orders final adoption. And the next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 275, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 275 approves and ratifies a declaratory resolution in economic development plan of the Metropolitan Development Commission for the 421 North Penn Economic Development Area and declaring that area to be designated as an allocation area. Counselor Ray made a motion to reconsider Proposal Number 275, stating that he was not present at the last meeting. The motion passed by a vote of 11 to zero. Deputy Mayor Smith Jones gave a summary of the proposal. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 6 to 5, with Councilors Adamson, Jackson, McHenry, Robinson, and Shreve casting the negative votes. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Scales.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just looking into the project and saw some comments made by, I believe it's Mr. DeLaglio. I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing it with Charles Street Investments. And I saw that the process for this project started way back in 2017, and then plans were revised in 2018, and now we're here in 2019, and finally, the project is up for approval by this council. And I know it's been a long process for you and probably a very costly one, but you made a comment that I truly appreciate, and that is that, you know, you admitted it was a long collaborative effort, but it was worth working with the neighbors to get something that you could, everybody could be pleased with. And I just want to thank you for that, and thank you for the patience involved and your willingness to work with community members. And I just hope that other developers will emulate that spirit of collaboration and not cram projects down the community's throat that are really not wanted and haven't been vetted properly. So again, I thank you for your commitment to Indianapolis, and I hope that you'll find other locations in which to invest your dollars. So thank you again, and you'll have my vote.
Thank you, Counselor Scales. Counselor Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chairman Lewis, I know I asked you earlier, but can you tell the council what was the difficulty with the not passing, and then it still passed 6 to 5? Can you tell me what the issues were?
Mr. President.
Please, Counselor.
So I barely heard what Chairman Simpson said, but the issue the first go-around was about the cost of the individual units, the affordable housing piece, and just the design build. And it was our understanding, once again, that the president was having several conversations along the way, and I do believe, not including the president in the process, but along the way, I think the conversation may have gotten a little challenged at times, and so we were still trying to flush that out during that first meeting. But after that meeting, several conversations were had to get us to the vote this evening.
Mr. President, you want to elaborate on what the issues were?
Well, I think that Chairwoman Lewis did.
Chief Chair took care of it.
She did a good job.
So you're satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Gray.
Could you elaborate on the four of them? Four of them, man, whatever. Not at all. What did you think?
Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so the numbers that are in the proposal are not created specifically by the council or was not part of the debate with President Osley. Those numbers came directly from HUD, and I do believe Deputy Mayor Smith Jones could speak to that. But again, those numbers were given to us following the guidelines specifically from
Do you have those? Chairwoman Lewis.
I do not have those detailed minutes in front of me. Pardon me. And again...
Is the deputy mayor here?
I thought I saw...
Deputy Mayor Smith Jones.
Thank you.
Would you come forward?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, for calling me forward. Good evening, members of the council, and thank you, Madam Chairwoman Maggie Lewis. Counselor Gray, with regard to your question, as was indicated earlier, the numbers with regard to affordable housing are what is the guidelines that are given by HUD. And so we utilize that standard because it is applied nationally. What it is, is 80% of AMI. So in the area of Indianapolis, Marion County, that's approximately $43,000, $44,000 earned per year, which is what the standard is and applied nationally.
Counselor Gray, go ahead, please.
So what is the number for the rent in affordable, in one of these affordable houses?
So, for example, one-bedroom unit will be $1,235.
And the max?
The maximum would be, for a two-bedroom, would be $1,390.
And that's considered low housing, probably?
According to HUD, the guidelines indicate that that is 80% of AMI, and that is what is defined as workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions from councilors? Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think just for, to let people know where my train of thought on this is, this is currently a site that is a parking lot, and has been such, I think, for 20 or a little bit more than 20 years. Generates somewhere in the woods about $16,000 in tax revenue for the city. So when this development is finished, it's going to generate several hundred more thousand dollars or millions of dollars over the course of 25 years in tax revenue for the city of Indianapolis. Plus, it gives us a development on the site rather than a parking lot. So at the end of the day, I ventured to look at this, that we are using tax revenue created from the developer to proceed and make this development happen while creating construction jobs for the development and increasing our tax revenue on the site. So I think that's important to note on this. So I just wanted to let my colleagues know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. Additional comments from councilors? Let's see. Counselor Shreve.
Thank you, President Osley. I was a no vote, as was noted on this. And so in that sense, I, my vote was paired up with my colleagues, Adamson, Jackson, and Robinson, and we aren't always in the same camp on some of this. And I would describe myself as a pro-business, pro-development type. My reservation with the project, specific to this project, and from a policy standpoint as we wrestle with some of these decisions at the Metropolitan Economic Development Commission is, we've got to make good bets on where we're going to allocate sort of public resources, public funding, to encourage development in and around Marion County. I think this is a prime site. Yes, it's a parking lot, and yes, it can and should be more, but sometimes a developer sits on a piece of ground to ride the appreciation curve as everything around it increases in value. And that's clearly been the case on this piece of property. But moreover, what we will do if this passes, and I suspect it's likely to pass, we will have to provide city services to the 400, 500 people that lay their heads there each night for 20 cents on the dollar. there each night for twenty cents on the dollar for the next twenty-five years. We're creating a single-site TIF and allowing eighty percent of the increment to go back to the developer to repay themselves on the bonds. We are getting some affordable housing units in it. Twenty percent would be affordable if twelve thirty-five plus the cost of a parking space for another, I think, one fifty is truly affordable. And so, there are some of us that kind of push back on that notion that that's still pretty pricey. But it's a lovely proposed property and yes, the developer has worked hard to placate some really particular neighbors in and around there. But it's because it's such a prime piece of property right across from the Indiana War Memorial. And so, that's just, it is what it is. But let's recognize it for what it is. It's really expensive and it's going to cost the city quite a bit more money than we're going to collect to deliver services for the next twenty-five years. And we can do that, but we're going to have to shift that tax burden to the neighbors. Everyone else is going to have to foot the bill for that. And so, for that reason, I was a no, despite liking so much else about this project.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. In terms of the, how we define workforce housing or low-income housing, I think that is a conversation that we need to have with the administration, you know, as we look at future developments. But I don't really feel like it's fair or in good faith to change that standard that we have used consistently over my last three and a half years on this council. I don't feel like it's really fair to change that midway through a project when it's been such a long process. So, I, that's how I feel about that. You know, to Counselor Evans's point, this is a drastically underutilized piece of property that we make almost no money on. And even with the eighty percent that we're going to give back to this developer, we're still multiplying what we get from that property by eight. It's a huge increase for the city that will allow us to do a lot more and provide a lot more city services. And I would argue that even though it's extremely prime real estate with a very prestigious address attached to it, it has been a very difficult thing to, I mean, there's a reason, right? In four years, we haven't had anyone try this, in my four years. And there's a reason it's been there for twenty-five years and nobody has been successful in placating the neighbors and making a workable project and even getting to the council. So, I think that's saying something and I'm of the mind that a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush and this is a good opportunity that we should take, so I urge my colleagues to support it.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And while I recognize that that cost of twelve hundred to fourteen hundred, it is a lot of money. My day gig, I work with low-income families every single day and that, it's not a reasonable number, we all recognize that. But I don't believe, and CFO Brown, or maybe even you can correct me on this, I don't think that this body has the authority to adjust those guidelines and those numbers when it comes to affordable housing, and I'm doing air quotes, right? We don't have that authority. Is that not correct?
Correct. Mr. CFO.
Yes, the formula is set by HUD and so, we just plug in the area median income. And keep in mind, we're talking about either the census tract or the actual area. We're not talking about all Marion County. So, when we look at these projects, we look at that median income for the area. So, if we, if we were looking at the county, yes, that would probably be a lot lower rent number. But when we look at that particular census tract, we look at that particular downtown mile square, the median income is a little bit higher. So, that's why the rents seem to be high.
Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor President. Want to say that I really appreciate what Counselor Shreve said. I fully agree with much of what he said. I think twenty-five years is way too long. Those of you who are in the audience and at the council, think of where you were twenty-five years ago, what you were doing twenty-five years ago, what your income was, what you were paying for housing, for groceries and everything else, and what that is now. And I just think twenty-five years is too long to give any type of an agreement that has to do with finances because twenty-five years from now, that property is going to be worth a whole lot more if history repeats itself. Incomes are going to go up substantially. Rents are going to go up substantially. Everything's going to go up and yet, we're giving it twenty-five years. So, I just think twenty-five years is way too long for any type of agreement.
Thank you very much. Counselor Simpson.
So, of course.
No, Counselor Simpson.
I can yield to my elder. Okay, thank you, Counselor Gray. This is one of those issues where we talked about when new businesses come in here and they say they're going to create jobs for us and they're below minimum wage and, you know, it makes it look like, you know, they're doing us a favor. I guess in this case, it is what it is. HUD said that's what it is and I think Bart cleared it up a lot more by saying by the census tract where it's located. And the reality is, that's what the rent is going to be for someone who, what they consider low income. I just think that that low income, if you're in a special census tract, we need to say, you know, we don't want to hear about the low income because ain't nobody low-income can afford fourteen hundred or fifteen hundred dollars a month. And if it's going to go up, and I think we need to have some reasonableness about where it's located at versus if it's in my neighborhood or in your neighborhood, then yeah, it's, reality is real. But in this case, I don't think that that is going to meet the means of what we consider what kind of people we need to go in there. So, I just want to make that a point.
Counselor Gray.
President Osley, I'm sure that you're aware that twenty-five years is probably not a very long time for people who do investments to have land and hold on to the land until it eventually come to the value in which they wish to make a profit off of it. So, to have them being vacant for twenty-five years is not an issue. But to your statement, CFO Brown, if you're saying that this is made on the census tract in that particular area, are you telling me that you're only going to try and get renters or people to move in there from within that tract? You're not going to try to get people from outside?
Other additional comments, questions? Counselor Shreve.
President Osley, thanks for recognizing me a second time. I just would observe for the audience viewing that we really wrestle with this sort of stuff and most of the work is done at committee, in this case, the Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. And there have been a number of conversations both at committee and with the petitioner and we work hard to figure this out and it's not all party line. And I appreciate the thought and honest debate that has gone into one that's a tough call. I indicated where my vote is and I appreciate everyone's listening to me along the way tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing me. Just two quick things. I think we often conflate workforce housing and affordable housing to mean the same thing. And this, this particular kind of project is not targeted at low-income folks while it still remains pertinent that there are affordable housing components of it. This is focused on the workforce, specific to people like police officers, firemen, teachers, nurses, medical personnel, that there are jobs within proximity of that site. It is a strategy around people working and living in the county. And we have quite a bit of work done at the idea that we need fifty thousand more people making fifty thousand dollars a year if we don't intend to raise taxes on everyone to cover some of the needs we have throughout our community. And so, this population growth is important and it does provide not arbitrary numbers but based on an AMI for a community that makes this make sense. So, I'm a yes. Thank you.
Counselor McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to weigh in quickly with some numbers. Hundred and sixty thousand dollars in new tax revenue per year, a large donation to the public arts, a hundred and thirty-five construction jobs while the place is being put together, then a hundred and twenty-eight permanent jobs once it's completed. And all of this on an underutilized surface parking lot. So, I urge my colleagues to simply vote yes on this. Thank you.
Counselor Gray.
I just, I've been on this council a little while and I just wanted to explain to Counsel Johnson that this affordable housing thing is just a new play on words that they changed when we, when this council required that they redefined it because what they were saying wasn't what it was being. And now, all of a sudden, they came from affordable housing to this, from low-income housing to affordable housing. So, this is something that just happened over the last few years and it's, it still has the same pretense even though we changed the words. And this, this always was a selling point for the developer to come to this council and says that we're going to give you some low housing apartments in here in order to get this done. But then, when people started to understand that the low housing numbers, people couldn't afford that, then they came back with the new language in these proposals saying that this is affordable housing. Then we asked them about affordable housing, they said exactly what Counselor Johnson just said. Well, now, we're trying to recruit police and firemen and teachers, people who live downtown, to do this. So, the terminology has changed, but the meaning is the same. So, just don't get confused.
Very good. If there are no more comments, let's proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries twenty to five. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 276, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 276 approves the issuance of a tax increment revenue bonds for Charles Street Development Company and a maximum amount not to exceed nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finance the construction of a thirteen-story mixed-use development consistent of approximately two hundred and thirteen rental use, residential units, approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet of combined retail and office space, and approximately two hundred and fourteen parking spots located at 421 North Pennsylvania Street and District 11, and approves and authorizes other actions in respect to this project. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of six to five with councilors Adamson, Jackson, McHenry, Robinson, and Shreve casting the negative votes. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty to five. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 311, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. 311 is a proposal, propose a resolution of the Marion County Local Income Tax Council to request approval from the Department of Local Government Finance to lower the levy freeze tax rate and to cast a vote before us today. There's no one from the controller's office. I want Bart Brown, our controller, to explain to the folks out here exactly what the purpose of this proposal is.
Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Chairman Simpson, thank you for the opportunity. This is a similar proposal that we took up last year, back in 2009, right after the property tax, property cap, property tax caps were enacted. The state government gave us the opportunity to make up some of that lost revenue through increased income tax and this county did that. Every year, the auditor and the DLGF calculate how much of that potential property tax loss would be and we could raise the same amount of the income tax to make up for that loss. Every year, we have to calculate that. The last couple of years, we actually, because the rate is set, we actually are collecting more in income tax toward the loss of property tax. So, the excess has to go into what is called a stabilization account and cannot be used unless we collect less than we needed. And we don't anticipate doing that. If we set the rate at the exact dollar amount of what we need for these local units to make up for the property tax loss, then we can keep that amount for our budget. So, that is what we are asking you do tonight, is set the rate so we only collect a hundred percent of what we need and not put the excess into an account in which we cannot use.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. President, it passed out of committee eight to zero. I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 320, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 320 approves the application of Middle Mile Infrastructure LLC for a public right-of-way use franchise to install, construct, maintain, repair, and operate a proprietary fiber optic network and to provide shared access to the fiber optic network to the Indiana Department of Transportation. The chair asked if the city will have to cover any expense or provide any manpower. Director Parker of DPW stated that Indianapolis will not have to provide anything. The chair also asked if the fiber route will be underground and Director Parker answered in the affirmative. Counselor Oliver moved, seconded by Counselor Gray, to recommend granting a public rights, right-of-way franchise to MMI to the full council and that motion carried by a vote of nine to zero. And Counselor Gray moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to recommend approval of this franchise contract with MMI to the full council and that motion was carried by a vote of nine to zero. And I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Counselor Gray.
There's a component in there that Vice President Adamson left out. This is a twenty-five-year payment due to the city for use of this property. And we chose to use, to make it a one-sum lump payment because it would be better used in that form than to try to drag it out over the twenty-five years of the contract.
All right, motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments, additional comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-five to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 316, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal Number 316 authorizes a speed limit reduction to thirty miles per hour along Shelby Street between Troy Avenue and Madison Avenue in District 16. Counselor Shreve moved, seconded by Counselor Gray, to amend Proposal Number 316 from thirty miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour. That amendment failed by a vote of one to nine. Counselor Oliver moved, seconded by Counselor Osley, to send Proposal 316 to the full council with a do-pass recommendation, do-pass as amended recommendation, or not, not as amended, the motion carried by a vote of nine to zero with Counselor Shreve casting the single negative vote. And I so move. That was nine to one.
Very good. Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries seventeen to eight. Next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 317, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take Proposal 317 to 332 together. Thank you. Proposal Number 317 authorizes intersection controls at New Jersey Street and Sanders and Orange Streets and Parkway Avenue in District 16. Proposal Number 318 authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Liberty Oaks subdivision in District 6. Proposal Number 319 authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Gray Meadows subdivision in District 6. And Proposal Number 332 authorizes intersection controls at Pennsylvania and Kelly Streets in District 16. Counselor Coats moved, seconded by Counselor Gray, to send Proposal 317 through 19. How did I, I think I went ahead one, so we'll pull. How did I, I think I went ahead one, so we'll pull back.
317 through 319.
Through 319, yeah.
Plus the 332.
Plus proposal 332 to the full council with a do-pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of 10 to zero, and I so move.
Movements are properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 25 to zero. There is no business under special service district councils, there is no business under new business, and so the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The doctored agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Counselor Adamson, in memory of Leslie Ryan, Shirley A. Brown Rochester, and Gloria Monsi. By Counselor Osley, in memory of Betty M. Walton, Byron Ratcliffe, Nicholas and Ashlyn Nelson, Archie McKinney, and Marion Spencer. By Counselor Maury, in memory of Johnny O'Hickey and Marty Griffin. By Counselor McQuillan, in memory of Sergeant Charles Edward Tice. By Counselor Cordy, in memory of Iva Alice Manier Baker and Coach Larry Willen. By Counselor Mascari, in memory of Norma O'Gara. And by Counselor McHenry, in memory of Mike Thaxton. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council to recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons that are here specifically named. I respectfully ask to support the fellow councilors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body, and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advised in this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. And hearing no further motions, we adjourned.